I'd like to call this meeting and report that you gave to the district of the very least important for Monday, remember, in the evening. Mike Goldkopf, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Nevin. Here. Mary Ann. Here. Your members. Ryan, not here. Ryan Riley.
Here.
The bedroom. Here. And I would see with the flash of the time power. I want to be this to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to say a motion for the approval of the next of the number of 11 to 2013 board meetings. Motion be second and discussed. Hearing none, if you favor being supersized by state now.
Aye.
Those close. Mr. Cummings abstentions. Brings us to correspondence of which I have none, any of the board members here for this time. Hearing none, administrative correspondence. Hearing none brings us to the portion of the agenda with public viewpoints. Do we have anybody that's here for public viewpoints tonight? Public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing none brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled staff and student recognition.
We don't have any formal recognition, but we do have a number of students and staffers tonight, so let me go over it for a second.
Brings us to the item on the agenda entitled reports. First up is the facility process update and along with the deferred maintenance priorities list.
Should we start with introductions again to remind the board?
Sure. There are three of us that are going to present tonight. I'm Dan Davis from C.D. Schmidt. Most of you have never heard me prior to much. And then Eric Schmidt, who you've also heard from C.D. Schmidt this year. To go through, we have numbers and stuff to present. And then Bob Beiger, the comp have signaling, he's there at education. So, three of us are going to walk through this with you. And we have a PowerPoint prepared. If you want to stop and have a little discussion about it, it's important for you to understand all the stuff that we're going to go through. So, we've a lot here. So, please stop and take your questions.
Can I ask you a question? How do you get this thing to work?
A little bit farther down.
All right. Oh. Here. So, what kind of clapping? Oh, the PowerPoint, that's different.
So, we're going to walk through, we have an agenda set up. You've asked us for a bunch of different things. You've got, you asked us for a phase approach to all the list of things that were identified as needs in the district. And also to respond to the survey that you got back. So, we're going to kind of walk through that and look at the different sources of funds, the different kinds of work that you could do to match what the survey put as priorities for the community. And so, we're going to walk through all of that stuff. And it's not a lot of work, it's not a lot of good work that I'll take credit for. But it was a lot of detail. And so, we've gone through all the information that you've had, we've updated a lot of numbers and looked at some solutions for a bunch of different stuff. I mean, there really is different buckets. So, we're going to go through how we looked at deferred maintenance and safety and security, most of which were really generated from lists that you've seen before as that longer maintenance list, which at one point was priced at about $13 million dollars, $12 million dollars. And so, we've gone through a very rigorous prioritization process on what we want to do with that. So, these two, we'll go through in detail to understand what's in there. We've also been asked this, we're looking at commissioning at the elementary schools, particularly because they're used for summer school quite a lot. And a little bit more because of the windows and ceiling is going to be old. And then, we've also looked at what was third really on the survey, and that's to begin, looking at some of the educational improvements in the district. And the first one there was kindergarten integration, kindergarten of elementary schools. And then, we'll look at in total what that looks like. All the way along the way, we're going to have two discussion points and have a discussion at the end as well. Dan O'Brady is back here too, I think, a month or two. If you have questions about that, he was very involved in helping us with the maintenance process. So, these are, as we present this stuff, it's really sort of an Alex Hart sort of grouping throughout this thing. So, we're already in the process. So, this chart you've seen before, which says here we are in mid-December, we're looking at getting up close to if you want to adopt a resolution or go to a referendum in April being close. So, we think we have enough information here to have a good discussion on who to toward that. You've seen this before, but in the past, we handled and dedicated resources toward two out of the three prongs of really what your mission and vision say. So, you've got the student performance and teacher engagement, and you've spent time and effort and money on those already. And so, what's next really is prepare the buildings and look at flexible learning environments. And that's what came out in the survey. Those two came out toward the top. And that's really what we're focused on, so that's what we're counting on. So, this was the survey and sort of the top three. So, it's secure repair, revitalize agency facilities, that was the top, if you remember those questions. And that question was a $10 million referendum that supported that kind of work. And that was a favorable result. Next was the flexible learning environments. And again, the kindergarten consolidation was topical, and I said if you want to think about it or talk about it at the time, you can, we got those prepared. And then, obviously, third was the co-curriculum programs.
When we look at how we're going to fund this, it really comes down to three funding buckets at this point in time. There's a $2.5 million that was reborrowed after we retired some debt that's still hanging out there. It's a whole list of deferred maintenance items. It's an operational bucket, which Dan would argue should be much smaller than that representative of the other two. Then finally, a potential referendum question, which indicated the more than 50% favorable accrual of going to some type of referendum to about $10 million dollars is where that ended up. So, we wanted to look at kind of where we're at today, specifically as it relates to the $2.5 million borrowed funds and what we're spending those dollars on. And the school has already advocated for these types of programs to be a part of a $2.7 million budget. Now, I know my math is bad, but it's not that bad. That $2.7 million is a stretch goal. So, each one of these items is approximate budget that make up the $2.7 million. If, once we reach $2.5, that bucket's exhausted. The balance then falls lower to the other deferred maintenance list, which will be a part of a $10 million referendum. So, that kind of cleared, that's pretty much where we're at.
Did that list, was that prioritized, or like, what would be dropped?
Well, you would need to take a look at the list and prioritize that. This is the goal that was set.
$2.7, you're saying we have $2.5. Run by this guy.
Correct. Our stretch goal is $2.7.
How do these have been bid out yet? So, they're budgets, and so, we still have to go through a competitive bidding process and stuff.
Yeah.
Do you want to address how you get the priority numbers?
Yeah, it is important to go through the process, to mention the process.
Well, these particular priority numbers were predetermined by a different group of people. So, one of the things we identified is when we inherited this list, I couldn't really identify the logic by which these projects became a priority. When I go through the list, it makes sense that those are a priority. They should be on the list. Little steel joints, locking, okay, that makes sense. That should be a priority. But I didn't understand exactly why these won out over some of the other ones. So, what Dan and I did is set up the process by which we could look at the remainder of the list, because these were pretty much already committed to the $2.5 million bucket. We took a look at the remainder of the list, approximately $10 million in and of itself, and said, okay, we need to come up with some kind of a logical way of ranking them. And that's exactly what Dan and the district spent a lot of time doing. Excuse me. Is going through that list and ranking them. And I'm jumping ahead a little bit. And so, you can start to come out with priorities. Now, the priority one items were the immediate things that had to happen because they're in such disrepair. And that's typically things that need to happen.
What were those criteria that you used?
Good point. One was life safety. If somebody was going to, if there was a potential for somebody to perhaps hurt themselves as a result of the deficiency in the building that immediately got thrown to the top of the list. Building safety. If a roof was so bad that it was currently leaking, that got thrown up to the top of the list. Age, aesthetics. All those different items had different weights, but they all came together into a total with the highest numbers were the ones that became a priority one.
I would think some of the things that you mentioned, that we might be able to read in a little bit, you know, the pocket, these might come under the energy, the grant or funding that will be proceeding as well.
Well, the energy process or planning, that's another bucket that could happen in the future.
Right.
And that's a process we could go through. If we find out that we could do that, those could be deferred. Okay? So, these are put together.
Those could be deferred or they could be transferred.
And then transferred to a different funding bucket. So, this is assumed right now that you won't go through that process, but it doesn't preclude it from the future. Does that make sense? So, in other words, if you go through, you pass a referendum and you have this, while we're looking at, there's quite a time between the time you pass a referendum and the time you actually do projects, you know, it takes a little while. We'll look at that again. We'll go back through and see which ones we can actually fund potentially through that kind of a category.
Because we have made the commitment to vote toward that, for that funding. We have a commitment, but not, yeah, for the study. But not any projects yet. Oh, right, right.
Well, what, legitimate question, why would we put that when it may fall into that category? Well, we put it here now, assuming that we're not going to be able to do the energy funding yet. Okay? So, we don't want to assume there's another market out there by any means. Okay? That alternate funding comes in two ways. You can fund it within your operating budget, okay? It's just like you do with the survey. Or you go out and you have that information and you look at what you need to go through that, exceed your cap again. So, it's a complicated process, you know, to go out and exceed your cap again for any project.
I think what Mo was suggesting, and I would agree, is that we invested in the survey and people came in to do an assessment.
Right.
We want to make sure that all of these pieces are integrated. And so, as you go through this process, we would like to hear back, which of these things have been starred as potential for the energy.
Yes, we do have that.
Right, so that we then can help, you know, make determinations so that we're not spending money that we may yet coming from another market.
One more brief question. Could we get a copy, electronic copy of these?
Yes, sure. Absolutely, yeah.
I could share it right now.
Well, I think it would go without saying. There's another slide that I would like to show.
If there are items on this list that can be taken and put in the other bucket, there are other things that aren't on this list right because of the tear.
Yep.
So.
You have to understand, oh, they're both going to have an impact on the tax pay.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we need to be transparent about that, just because it calls into the category of energy savings and we can do, we prove some of that money back and certainly it's going to be initially.
Of course. But I want to be sure.
No, we have taken, that's a good question. Yeah, absolutely. We always operate under the, that we can't assume that there's going to be another funding bucket there, because it does take public action that affects our taxes, since it's taxed. So, we're not assuming any. It's very easy, really, if that happens, we go through that process and it will support some energy funding. Work pays for itself even within the savings. You still have to, you still have to go and borrow, all right? You still have to get, you know, maybe actually do that. It's easy enough to move those down, you know, into the energy funding and move some of that list that we're not paying for now up. So, we want all that hope later on down the road. We can certainly provide a possibility of taking.
So, that's why, for that point, that's why we created a phase one ultimate list. So that as items from phase one drop off, either for different funding sources or someone or mechanically, reporting tag these items as also in need, they can start going back up in priorities to recover. So, we don't have to send the whole thing and solve it again.
To my fellow board members, we did delay the energy in action because it was brought forward as an idea to take this out and change the mill rate before the budget was passed. And it was a very truncated timetable. And the board deliberately said, no, 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 no. We had our annual meeting, set our mill rate, something I got a little agitated about. And then, we were going to come along and say, oh, by the way, we've got this energy grant and we're going to hit it right to the budget. And we didn't, we didn't prep people at all for that number or that change in the level. And so, the board delayed the implementation of that, knowing that we could put it into place. But it's going to be a process of laying these projects out and communicating the public what we're doing.
Right.
And it's going to be what we told them all along, if you invest in this, it will pay you back in this period of time.
Right.
And that's what we're going to do. And yeah, it's not quite the same as a referendum, it's actually running out and putting them on notice and then waiting for them to come back and disagree with it. But at least we'll have it all the way out.
Right.
But the reason why they've got all of it down into it is because we did delay that implementation of that process.
And that's what we've recommended as well. So, we agree with that process. So, that's the, so going back, that's the $2.5, right? So, that's that bucket. And it takes care of a good chunk of that $12.8 million list that you've got to use to see.
And then again, we looked at the entire list, re-prioritized. The priority ones kind of came to the top. We then said, well, if there's other funding mechanisms, what is our next grouping? We identified another group so they could, as items were able to fall off the list, we can immediately implement them as part of the plan.
And that list, if you remember, there was a mix, and there's terminology we use. So, there's deferred maintenance, there were capital improvements on that list, there were security issues, all right? So, there was a whole mix of things that were recommended to the district to consider doing. And so, we've grouped them a little bit differently. So, yeah, we've looked at deferred maintenance as one sort of topic. And then, we've taken safety and security as another theme. And that does include some capital improvements, okay? And we'll talk about a little bit. So, we've kind of grouped them a little bit differently based on how we asked the question in the survey.
And so, then when you look at the deferred maintenance summary for the previous list, we had approximately $12.4 million worth of work identified.
$12.4, okay.
Yeah. And then, through the borrowing funds, we've identified a stretch goal of $2.7. Again, it's a stretch, it could fall to those $2.5, it could fall less, we still have to bid those projects qualified, et cetera. And then, through phase one, the number you couldn't see was the $2.9 million. The alternates are $752,000. As Dan mentioned, another bucket is safety and security for $938,000. And we're on the list. So, with this process, we're attempting to tackle about $7.3 million with the deferred maintenance list, which is a huge chunk right off the bat. And some of those other items that didn't have the same priority level are things as, an example, is carpet. So, is carpet really deferred maintenance? Yes. Are there other things that you may want to spend your dollars on in advance of replacing that carpet? Probably.
Well, and roofs are a sensitive topic. So, there are roofs that, when we were, you know, we had other people up on the roof and Dan was up there, that the roofs that are urgent and plus a couple more are in this referendum budget or in that $2.5 million market. The ones that are left in this $5 million still have quite a bit of life, plenty of them. Now, if they have five to eight years of life left in them, we don't necessarily recommend that you replace them because they get, in the past, or, you know, if a 15 year roof, a rubber roof, they'll last, you know, 20, 25 years. Yeah. So, it didn't make sense to us, we made a lot of assumptions through this process, but it didn't make sense to us to replace a roof that still had, you know, five, seven, eight years of life at least left on it. Or look at just carte blanche, complete replacement. There are other methods in between that you can, and we suggested some of those, that you can just redo the seams and get another 10 years of life on it. And so, those are the kinds of things that we looked at, and you've got about $5 million left on what that original list was. And that could take you out to, so I guess what I'm saying, that five-year list was very comprehensive and potentially, you know, beyond the five.
Yeah, makes sense. Everybody seems so excited, wants to keep talking about.
So, the process we went through, we just sort of cat for cat. So, I want to make sure everybody understands how we got there. So, the whole list, the whole $12.38 million, went through, we prioritized those based on categories. And I mean, it was just, here's, here's force rank, really, and said which ones fall to the top. And that's how we came up with the priorities. It was sort of unbiased and going down and forth with Dan, Martha, and Eric and I. And so, it wasn't just, this is what I wanted. There was science behind it.
And remember that $7 million figure does include projects that fall underneath, have $1 million, aren't we?
Yes, right. So, it leaves about a little over five left on that big list. Right. And we think a good chunk of those, a good chunk of those are roofs. And I remember it going.
About 10 to 15% are roofs that have either just come off of warranty or are, have been replaced with this kind of, at least for the next.
Are they actually used? Yeah. But that'll be part of the analysis that you'll say, this is probably going to be a five-year. So, we got to start planning for what?
Right.
And that's part of the phased approach. I mean, if we have a phased approach for all the improvements across the whole master plan, maintenance would go along with every step along, you know, if they help cover that, augment your operation.
So, the other piece that we looked at was safety and security. Again, we wanted to address virtually every facility in the district as well as looking at other types of strategies to achieve that. And again, this is small because it is a big list. But we looked at not only securing the main entrances, but also securing all the access into and out of the buildings. And then, part of the securing the main entrance, which is critical, is getting your offices up front right next to those entrances. Now, that became more of a challenge in some of your schools than in other schools that already have offices pretty close to the entrance. But in doing so, in some cases, for example, yeah, it's east. By doing that, we actually, I'm sorry, it's east, yeah, we displaced the IMC. If you remember, you go in the east, the IMC is right next to the entrance. So, by securing the entrance, by placing those offices and remodeling that space to further secure that entrance, we lost your IMC. So, as a result, we had to go someplace else with it. And one of the ideas that we came up with was to do a small addition to create that IMC space that was occupied by offices. So, those types of ancillary costs are all carried as a part of the security, because you can't do one piece without the other. You can't lose those offices in the IMC and lose your entire IMC. So, that type of logic and theory, why it's a good stuff.
Well, one of the things, and again, yeah, this is where we're doing something, and then all of a sudden, it's like, well, that might not have been our original intent for this project, but I have the opportunity to go into the teacher's lounge area, which is way too small. And would that be something that we maybe should even consider around now in this project while we're doing other ones other than that immediate project?
Yeah, we do have that, a hump in four in that renovation block. So, if you think of all where the IMC is and we replace that, things like that would get relocated as well and we could operate those if we had all those.
But we need to be able to educate the public that, you know, that we're doing this because of these other priorities, all right? That priority is still there and it'd be brought up to the top because it's all part of that immediate project too. Yeah, I mean, including classrooms, for example, you know, the heating and classrooms at the beginning of the year. So, those kinds of things, it's advantage of knowing with full breadth of the listings. So, those are in game terms as well.
Sure.
Those are the kinds of things included. So, we kept coming up with what it means, cost, or was it cost to the teacher, maybe culture.
One of the most unfortunate and heartbreaking issues around safety and security for any building such as ours is a historical perspective that says the tragedies that have occurred have occurred from within those buildings, whether Columbine or the elementary schools. People who were known, people who were allowed into a building. And I believe we need to be cognizant of that as we look at the larger picture. We need to be prepared and we need to be aware. But I also think we need to recognize that creating a fortress is not the solution to the problem.
I agree.
And I would like to make sure that, you know, the investments that we make in reformatting our buildings and the costs associated with that can be rationalized against the unfortunate More often than not, the issues are not coming from outside, they're coming from.
And Peter, again, obviously, we're working with facilities, so some of the safety issues, Martha sent us some information on additional training and other things. And we can certainly have that discussion, but maybe not tonight, but it's a different point. So, we look at security from a facility standpoint in sort of two sides of the brain. There's that electronic side, we're allowing it in, and we track doors that are held open and on cameras. There's sort of that surveillance and alert, documentation side and control. And there's the architectural piece that we've been talking about that just now, that moves that office function of the front door. Like here at the high school, because that office is left over the front door, that costs really quite a lot, I think, that operation. So, if you've always got control, during the day, if the bells, doors are all locked, who comes in? And it does change operation, you know, any handle folks that come through that front door. And this gives you one more chance to sort of, you know, see the way it's going to flare up and notice if there's something that's.
On this list where you have quantities, and it's taking down, you're not thinking about, Kevin said, secure entrance to offices, quantity's 630. What does that mean?
Now, where are feet? Okay, so each one of those is.
That's how we derive the cost.
Yeah, there's more detail behind this. Yeah, the sort of, yeah, it's about the area that we lay it out. Yeah. Those offices aren't at the front door, so it's like, you're off to the left, so there's a classroom there. So, hopefully, you have to find your classes.
But that's the reason for the variation in the numbers. I think some schools require a lot of work, right? The high school, like you mentioned, is relatively set up to a C P, so not so much.
So, safety, I mean, the other thing with safety, that Alhair is another example, the traffic pattern there, we see an immediate improvement. So, that cost with the layout that helps that traffic pattern is also in this number. Now, if you went back to the original capital list, then $12.8, $1.30 foot rate, $1.40, you know, it's a fix, it's a $12.8. But they, that had repave of the Alhair and Black kind of as it is. And so, you start to say, well, you know, there's a chunk of money there, it was almost a quarter million dollars. So, what we're proposing is, you know, a broader solution that improves the traffic and which we think is a true safety improvement, so it falls into this category.
Then we're asked to look at, quickly look at some air conditioning at the different facilities, again focusing on the elementary schools as a result of the survey. Here's some approximate costs. This is really utilizing split systems, this is one of the most economical ways to bring air efficiency through space. It's not necessarily the most energy efficient, but it's officially one of the more economical means of accomplishing that.
What, does this?
Yeah, a split.
You have, you have a unit per classroom instead of one.
It's a self-contained unit per classroom.
Yeah. So, in the summertime, literally, if you have summer school, you can turn on the classrooms that you need. So, in some ways, you can, you know, scale it to what you need to actually use.
Would those still be attached to digital controls, even if they're single unit?
There's a choice, there ain't, it's not a lot to have that. And yeah, we can still, it's relatively inexpensive, because they all have a control panel, I think they come that way. So, there's some cabling to go back to central computer. Do we do all our summer school in one school?
Well, we have Kid Stop program at GLW, and we have aid at elementary. And we had middle school and the high school this year because of the construction. That could potentially move back to middle school. And I do believe we have specific areas of the high school and middle school also included under the maintenance portion for air conditioning. So, not the entire building, but it's.
And it's a relatively small, limited control, but it's a period.
And the cost for classroom level?
Uh, yeah, right now.
Cost?
Yeah, the cost, the cost, because. I mean, it doesn't lead over, you know, during the normal course of the year, or the course of the day, so in effect, we have that many units, it'll eventually cool periods.
We're just thinking about when we invite the public in, all of our areas of residence, or in general assembly, an elementary building, just stuff all the kiddos and adults in that environment, it is the hottest living environment that you imagine, it seems like. And that to me would be, when it would be beneficial, but if I'm a taxpayer, I invested in an air conditioning building, I'd kind of like to have.
We could certainly price that on tour.
I mean, I think it's important that we look at the whole environment, not just the realized learning environment, I suppose, is the most critical, but that's where you stuff the most people in the buildings.
Yeah, and any additions we do, or heavy remodeling, automatic with that air conditioning back. Like at east, the IMC we just talked about, that would be air conditioning. And that's just part of the normal course, it's relatively cheap to do because you're already putting a new unit in, so to put an air conditioner in there, it's a quarter of a million, it isn't a big up charge.
I guess I'd be interested in knowing the difference between a comprehensive solution for a building.
Okay, sure.
Versus, I mean, individual solutions.
Can you bring that back?
And all buildings, not just, not just our.
Can we also look at it from the aspect of, if we don't go for the comprehensive, what would be the cost to eventually upgrade the comprehensive down the road? So that we can say, okay, we're looking at it from both angles, but maybe we're not going to do it today, but if we do it tomorrow?
Yep.
It's not going to be, if it was ten million and we were spending seven million, or ten million for the comprehensive, obviously it's not going to just be three million dollars over time.
Yeah, sure, hey, can you bring that back up?
Okay.
Thank you.
You, this system puts the condensing units under wood?
Well, that's a copy of the case, I'm not real good at this, we're playing that off. You can either go up on the roof or go outside.
We don't know yet.
It's a split system.
The split system, so you did invest or something?
I think the pros and cons of putting that one set up.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
That's my mistake.
We would tend a lot of group homes if we can, that also.
Put them on the ground if it's low or. Now, we were asked to investigate some of the consolidation at the Alghermon East and Fort Wilson to look at bringing kindergarten into a neighborhood school model. And using some rough guidelines that we received, again, this we kept completely separate because it would be an addition onto some end of the building. So there's no deferred maintenance cost in this, there's no safety cost in this, there's no overlap, this is purely, we really like this idea, let's go with it, this is what it costs.
This essentially vacates, that's the discussion you have to have too, because if we roll the kindergarten house, it would provide parity in all three elementaries, so we'd have kindergarten there in all three. And it was next on the list, so when we went through this process, you'll see in the summary that we were below attempting a limit, so we'll talk about this. This is an assumption we made, and it's a discussion you have to have with the board. And so we want to make sure you understand this. So in most cases, we were adding two kindergarten classrooms to each building, we ended up with three at GLW, because of the. Yeah, and then that configuration.
And we need to, again, this is big picture view and rough, we need to analyze our involvement numbers better and number of sections because we don't want to create problems in any schools where we start out with four sections and then repeating into three, and then all of a sudden we have to transfer students out. And we haven't had a chance to have a discussion with the board about some potential uses of West, one of which may be relocating our staff students to one of our buildings with our staff to reduce the going cost of operating that program. So those are all things that we can talk about here in the future.
Another thing, Paul, did any of this include the expansion of general facilities, kitchen, cafeteria? Because we were adding now two new sections or three new sections of kindergarten classrooms that obviously impacts our cafeteria, it impacts our, the restrooms for staff, it impacts, you know, so is this, this is putting on the end of the building or this is?
Yeah, and in those additions, it accommodates the restrooms for the kindergarten.
For the kindergarten rooms.
Right. And so it's your home, it really changes for the rest. It doesn't really affect core spaces, the cafeteria really doesn't get affected too much in kindergarten. On the gym for cross motor, do it, and so that's something that we thought that, but we haven't planned on adding on.
We're doing all the kindergarten. So wouldn't that affect your facility?
Typically, I think, well, Delve and I serve the.
Well, it will, it will in terms of number of sections that we, that we have available, and it makes a difference if that gym space is also used as a cafeteria, because then that limits.
They all are, aren't they?
GLW isn't.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I forgot, but the other two are, so. Okay, this is a new thing.
Yeah. I think we've gone through that planning work, and based on the analysis, it should work.
I would like.
Yeah, we're not at that level of utility, I think we need to look at numbers more closely.
Well, I just know we're scrambling now.
Molly's got to be part of that process.
I just thought we're scrambling now in those facilities, I mean, and.
Well, particularly east, I would say, our largest school, where we also have adaptive fire, and that space is shared.
But as in Alghermon, I think this is, it's max two. Without polluting.
If I remember east layout correctly, though, the gym, quote cafeteria, actually has a wall that pushes out onto the playground. It might be interesting, talking about adding space, you don't have to bring out laws anywhere, whatever you need to safely expand the playground. As a solution to, you know, more sections, regarding expanding cafeteria and gym space, the question of utilization.
Paul, we can certainly go back and verify that. So let's try to summarize, you know, we have deferred maintenance piece, safety, security. We're asked to look at air conditioning, we've got some options there, and of course the consolidation at the neighborhood school with the kindergarten. So what you end up with is a very confusing matrix, and with the way that we priced it really is to pick and choose. So it's, we aren't going to be able to come before you have all the answers to the specifics, but based upon what the board would like to see us continue to investigate, is where we have to go back and continually refine.
And if you look at the numbers, you're just, so you can see there's three point nine million in current maintenance, there's three point six in safety and security, there's nine hundred grand in the air conditioning solution, which is at least expensive, we didn't sort of look at larger comprehensive, I didn't really look at numbers at all, but it gets smaller. And then there's three point three for that kindergarten issue, all the kindergarten is out of West, none of the middle school.
And that includes adding on to east for the new.
Yeah, the IMC for the media center is actually in the safety and security, but it gets this way, that totals ten twenty eight million dollars if you, if you did all of that. So again, any of these really are sort of independent, the air conditioning and some of the, you know, the HVAC for maintenance, a little bit, you have to pay attention there, but they're pretty much set up, so they're an all part maintenance. And so we need, for you to do tonight, is to understand, one, you kind of, the process you went through a bit there. And if you have any questions about, really kind of, I guess the neighborhood schools we've been talking about, they're essentially, they are addition on the end of the most cases. Kind of like the. And some of the questions that are going to come up are, you know, if that's the case, if you elected to do this, what happens to West? And that's, you know, that's something that the board is talking about. There's some significant savings that limit facilities operational. So you didn't include the, any of the best current maintenance list in any of these lists? Just so you know.
Or the admin building?
Or the admin, or the admin, right. We did that on purpose, I mean, all these discussions, all to do with the admin space that you need and where to put that. Alright, so there's no dollars left here, the crew that goes to take care of the window and everything, so we're going to potentially go with short ownership.
And just a clarification, two point five for maintenance, is that in this figure or that's on top?
That's on top of this, that's already fully funded. So given this mix of options, depending upon how you choose their mix setup, or throw it all off, that all depends on what the question that needs to ask.
Yeah, so, yeah, you could not, leave the kindergarten and go with the football HVAC, you know, you can mix and match all this stuff, depending on how you interpret, from the other criteria you said, survey, or what you want to do with the board.
Or you could focus on a school.
You could focus on one school, and we moved, wanted to prepare in the east or whatever it might be, and, you know, spend some money to try that model and see how it works, there's, there's options there. I think there's an explanation that we all, you obviously have been asked about, and then what does this do operationally to the neighborhood schools? Obviously, if you, when the work happens or anything.
I mean, that left column there, maintenance reserves on about a half million dollar.
Oh, it didn't, yeah.
Is that basically for?
I should have made that a lot smaller.
Well, I mean, what is it there for? Is that somebody's groups that are down, going to be down the road about two years or something like that?
Yeah, you don't know necessarily what, you know, all that first list of priority ones, what might creep up, you know, there's one that I came up, you know, earlier. Essentially, that's ten percent of that half million or five million dollars, and that's how we recommend to handle that budget like that. You also use it for all, some of those prices where the bids come in a little higher, you know, tuition costs go up, or whatever might happen. So there's some room there to handle some volatility in the market. Our anticipation is that you'll have that, probably plus some good saves compared to, you know, to use on other ones. So we try to, then we'll stack that up in priority order, let me have to make that decision. I mean, you know, you could end up saving enough money, like if the air conditioning is a priority, which is our second priority, you say, well, if you save up to three hundred thousand dollars, you could do the whole school, the whole school.
Is there, is there any way to, alright, so you're just saying we decide we're going to do nine hundred eleven dollars a hour for air conditioning, we're moving some additions. What is the, is there a formula or a percentage that you can look at and say, all right, if you spend a million dollars on air conditioning, what is it going to do to our maintenance budget in the future as far as maintaining that? Because it's one thing to spend it, buy it, and it's pretty new, right? But moving forward, you know, just as well as we add on square foot, if somebody has to clean it, somebody has to maintain it, right? Is there, is there any formula that makes sense as to what that does to our operational maintenance budget?
There's not, what we do is look at it individually, you know, because the, it's, I don't know, big addition, you can, there are rules to follow for that, you know, square feet for disposal, square feet for, you know, for competing lighting, so those are relatively easy. In those air conditioning examples, it depends on the kind of unit, and those are a little more maintenance than a comprehensive solution on average. So we would look at those numbers and kind of try to make more, and before we get to those, probably make that decision, that's the next step we would do.
I've asked him, please.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, right now, there's one interpretation.
Why wouldn't we even ask at the end, here's.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The gas, so there are some impacts, I mean, for an amount of units, you know, they're, they're akin to those unit violators we have in the town, they're about as much maintenance as part of down there. And if there's a bigger area on the unit, a different system, you know, above, you've got unit violators everywhere, but you start to get some efficiency in servicing all the services. And if one dies in a room, it's not the whole system, the whole school, so there's, there's all the costs that are there. So is everybody, so there's, there's a lot of detail behind this, I guess, that was the point, you know, that, not a lot of homework and prioritize a lot, we want you to look at those lists and see what you think. I know you're going to have a million questions, but we had to make up a lot of assumptions. So I guess when you look at this, I wondered what you're thinking about, you look at it and say, you know, this, this approach, you did this, pulled kindergarten out for a minute, right? Go back to the slide where we got the, all those weights of mind for the, for the current maintenance list. So in the end, you're left with five million out of twelve point four. There. So, I mean, that's, you know, that's a conversation, you're left with five million out of the list, out of the twelve point four that was at the start. And I just wondered, I heard your picture thinking about that. A lot further than.
Well, personally, for me, the first two items, your current maintenance and your security and safety, I mean, those are, for me anyway, I mean, those are, well, obviously there's a lot of discussion as to whether we should or should not pursue them, but when we go beyond that, you know, that's where I think the discussion, the board needs to decide, you know, air conditioning, one, having an issue with that, but when you move to adding classrooms or kindergarten in that different buildings, I mean, do we want to do every building? You know, if we don't do every building, then you, we, risk, well, you only did east school, and my kid goes to GLW, or my grandkids go to GLW, you didn't do it there. And, you know, I, I think, I know we're on a timeline, and we need to spend a little bit more time as the board adjusting all of what we presented tonight, and obviously with some of the questions that the board has already come up with and may yes come up with before we end tonight, I think we're going to have to lean in and refine what it is that, you know, we're willing, we're willing to take with the meeting. But that's just my.
And again, I.
We're looking for some, I guess, certainly a lot further along, where we can say, that we could say, this is where we are today, this is how we're going to handle today, but this is what's coming down.
Well, we have, given size and small of our operation, they're always going to have a table maintenance list.
Absolutely.
Of millions of dollars. Given our current fiscal setup, economy for the schools, we're always going to have a column maintenance list. Just like every municipality has, you know, one list of roles that you need to done. Or you can do seventy five percent of them or eighty percent of them, but a year later, the list is.
Sure.
So I'm not worried about our maintenance list.
No.
But then that's something we always have to be aware of, you know, what a lot of people, how we're addressing, what we need to continue to be proactive in addressing.
You also don't want to replace all the roofs that, in the same year?
No, absolutely not.
Then they're all going to need to be replaced in the same year the next time, right? And there's no way, I mean, that's going to be very difficult to do, right? So having them staggered is actually the preferred way to do it. And that's why if we start fucking away at the balance of the maintenance list stuff, are we, as you said, are we replacing the roof that still has five years left? Are we replacing the roof that has eight years left? And, you know, when we talk about roofs, thus far, at least in the discussions I've been part of, it's just, we very rarely talk about replacing the seats. You know, it's replacing the roof, and is that because we, we let it go to the point that that was our option? I mean, I don't know, so.
Well, I think, and the roofs that are part of the two seven are the immediate ones, I think we're beyond just looking at the seats.
I understand that part.
We have some opportunity. There's two in particular that actually make up the seven fifty two that we can go over to see what that costs.
Yeah, and last another ten.
That lasts another ten years, we won't get a warranty on them, but they're perfectly fine. Then the balance, there's three additional roofs that fall in the five dollars, so that was one of the thoughts when Dan and I were going through that whole list, was to co-do these favorities intellectually so that in five years, you don't have another three million dollars in five years to replace all those.
Yeah, and then that, you know, and then, to bring it back up, I will, I mean, the most question is, if, you know, at some stage, you do find that you want to. at some stage, you do find that you want to look at the interview statements, some of those maintenance items, you can go to that funding, and those, it's the last $5 million boot up. So you've got, you know, a number of ways to start to look at that.
So we could pick away at some more if we.
Yeah. We always want you to go into, even before you start, prioritize that list. We give it, you know, the L C L S, we give you a suggested priority list, okay? So you can react to it, ask questions. But go ahead and go into, you know, that firewall that you passed through. And you've got 2.5 with that prioritized list. So I'm not wishing to spend that, I'm not excited.
Yeah, our objective would be to start picking away at that funding.
Realistically, what, what is your perspective on the discussion of what's next? What did you want from us?
I, the questions you've asked already. So some of the things, I expected that you're going to need the C L list, digest it, understand how we got there, okay? So I, does everybody understand kind of how you got to these numbers and how you produced them?
Well, I think they understand how you got to the items.
Yeah.
It's your expertise, the numbers.
Well, right, yeah, how we prioritize them, I guess is what I guess I asked.
Yeah.
Well, can you speak to the, I heard, I heard your first priority here, you know, life priority or, did you find any of those? Because I don't believe that a life-threatening priority is something that would be great for a, for a, for a maintenance list to be in that. If we have a life-threatening priority, we'll get it addressed.
Correct, if it's obviously.
You didn't find any out there, did you?
No. That's why it was, and there was a way to score, you know, because if we found something else quite working.
Well, I would agree with you.
Life safety.
We got to wait.
My second question goes to the mobilization of an architect and a general contractor to do a building and how it affects the layout. Because through this last year, we've talked a lot about how we have added on to buildings piece meal, and we haven't improved the common areas, the hallways, the facilities, the cafeterias, the offices. We haven't, we just keep adding two classrooms or three classrooms on the end, and we have improved the infrastructure of that facility. And I, I'm wondering if we don't start addressing some of those needs. Now, I know that the cafeteria didn't score well in, in a survey that we didn't publish against because I kind of believe we didn't explain what, what splitting a cafeteria and a gymnasium does. For, it's not just square footage, it's buying time, it's buying scheduling, it's buying usage of that facility, and it's buying this flexibility. That's what it's getting us. And it's improperly sized for the facility. And I think people could understand that in the long term. But to me, if you're impacting this, and I'll pick on Molly and East, if you're talking about Molly and East, and you're making the security upgrades, and you're building an IMC, and you're repurposing the IMC, why not finish the upfront part of the project of the infrastructure with a cafeteria? Mobilizing that front part once, and then if you come back and tack on three classrooms at the end of the long quarter, it's not nearly as disruptive to the whole building than coming back into them two years later and saying, hey, got, well, what we did worked, it was great, but now we need to improve it, and we're going to do it to you all over again. I don't want to say it's losing a school year, because it's not. I know you guys are very crucifer, you're not, you're not going to be disrupting too much, but still, it is. It's mobilization of the building responsibility associated with it.
Yeah, I'm kind of asking you, I have a feeling, the waiting here has, or 92 more impact in two years. I just feel the pressure to pull out. Yeah, we work in all sorts of situations where structure is not the, really, you can't upset the school through that process. There's, there's always a little bit of highs or lows, maybe some negatives, but, or, no disruption in the years. So.
My last question to the board is, is what about West and what about the Admin Building? If we have included West from any facility dollars or Preferred Maintenance because we say, oh, we're going to go down a different path, then you have to go down that path. You have to make steps toward doing that so that people understand why we're not investing in the building. If we decide to do a hybrid solution that doesn't fully implement our local kindergarten solution, then we need to put money in West. We need to make those same dollar investments there, in my mind. I guess I'd like to know what some of those investment plans are, and what some of those dollars would be. Because to me, that kind of works in the firm. If, if we don't have a solution. Yeah, yeah, if you're not, and, and it's same with the Admin Building. We have no Preferred Maintenance to the Admin Building, and yet it's one of them. It's in one of the worst shape structurally of, of the buildings that we own. So I realize there's a white knight out there, there's this supposed solution from the city, but, but I've served at City Council for 11 years, so I might have a little insight as to how the city operates and how they do things. I'm not sure we need to sit around and wait for the city. It might be a great solution, but we can't defer ma, if you want to defer maintenance on the Admin Building for another six months, I'm all in on that. But if you want to defer maintenance for another six years, waiting for the city, I'm not. I mean, we've got a responsibility to that building. And a basic one for the people that work there. I mean, it's, it's hotter than 80s in the earth.
Dan, I think you had dollar amounts, didn't you, for each of those buildings, correct?
Yeah. At Admin, you know, from the deferred list, it's about nine, it's over $900,000, which would be.
Which make, look, which makes no sense, in my mind. I mean, obviously, I can't believe I would vote for sticking $900,000 in that there. When for $900,000, you'd be almost home on just about a, a facility for the ground dollar for the size of spacing.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a 40% of it.
Yeah.
Versus if we put it in the West.
Well, I'm just, so, I'm not advocating it, I'm just saying, we have a responsibility for that building while we are. And until we commit to something different for either one of those facilities, we need to make sure that we remain committed to those facilities.
So maybe a way to look at this for you, and we figured you'd have to come back to another meeting, but I just kind of mentioned it. So if you say, there's a, there's a sort of a stopping point that Phase One could be, you know, that represents this First Referendum, West needs more than ultimate funding. You say, either you're going to do all the kindergartens, move, move out of West, and go all the way down that road, but stop there. So in other words, that one hundredth school comes to West, you move the kindergarten out, you move all this to Preferred Maintenance. And that's one scenario. And you look at the operational match, you look at all that stuff together. Or you stop short of that and put, put this back into West. You can either put kindergarten along or whatever you can afford and have that, you know, that option, those two options, kind of really laid out for all those folks kind of there. That, that would be good. I think that would sort of clear up that picture.
You know, I don't see, we've been only a few kindergarten sections out, I think it has to be all or nothing, because at some point, having just three classrooms there is not operationally responsible or from an academic standpoint, really good for, for that school owner. So, you know, we haven't talked in great detail yet about the SCAN program and some of our increasing mental health issues in our schools or students, and some of our more severe students that we have to work with on a daily basis. But right now, what we're lacking is some of those students' space. Dan, you have anything else you want to say about that? Yeah, I think we've gone above and beyond to the point where it is not made, um, essential sense to complete the SCAN program, to bring those students back to their home district. But we, right now, we are classed.
How many students?
Um, right now, we are up, should we, will soon be at another, and I believe we'll be up as well. And how many students in the SCAN? All together? We have the majority of students right now, they are at 18. And I think we're at about 30, 35,000 per student, which is what it costs us.
Two years ago, we had four.
But what we're finding is that the students, the families move into here. So even if they were someone else's student to be dealing with, they end up moving here, probably because of the Baller County Services that are also available here, but then they become our students.
Do you think that trend would continue, could be grown?
I do, looking at some of the mental health needs that we're currently trying to meet in our building this year. We just, that SCAN is our only alternative option.
What do we have, Raj?
Last year, we were at about, we fluctuated between eight and nine. Out of the 12 that we have there now, three of those were grandparents.
Okay, so we're down from eight, from two to eight, 12. Well, again, we never predict exactly the future, but the trend line is.
So far, SCAN has not been responsive to giving us some type of a reduced rate for, over certain of those students. We've had multiple conversations with them. We realize that, you know, with drawing that number of students, it impacts some, but we would have, I think, a bit of advanced knows that's a reduction.
So, I would, as a C Supply Board member, I certainly would indicate that we were having those discussions. And obviously, the costs are impacting our school, that they would need to know that, you know, this is certainly something we need to consider. And if we can't get those costs in line, that would be something that would greatly impact our direction and also theirs.
Just a reminder to our public that the costs associated with educating and taking care of our children go up, and the funding to do that from the state goes down. And the only way to address that issue is to contact your legislature, your representatives, and tell them enough is enough. Because we cannot do it alone. We do not have the tools without the dollars. Raise hell.
These are the questions we had discussion. Yeah, ultimately, the questions that we wanted to accomplish, and I'm sure you understood what the funding sources were. I mean, that was, that's pretty clear, because we do heard about it, but any questions on that? The first two buttons that you have is the 2.5 million that you ran by, with the operational budget of a year on it. And then just first potential reference, are really all we're talking about. The guidelines, we talked about that, there were a commission of proposals were two, you know, without, so you see our. The Preferred Maintenance numbers, we went back and repriced some things that we thought were a little bit, maybe old or faded. Looked back, maybe all your high school, and much of the defenses, make sure to do it, you know, anything we felt were accomplishable. So contractors did, so the cost analysis, so you know that they're, they're good numbers. Clear why we had it, like, in the air conditioning, we talked about, so we'll come back to some analysis there.
Not only, not only comprehensive solution for elementary buildings versus the classroom solution, but for all buildings. I want to know what the commission.
You know, driving, what's driving the kindergarten, you know, that, that was the first on the list. And so that's our decision. So you put both scenarios together for another discussion. And that's a good question, that's an excellent one, that is, that make sure we can stay in the discussion.
Well, I did share the timeline with the board and the package. And so you'll, you will know that we, from today, we do have a leadership team meeting. That leadership team has been in the past, Mark and myself, and our consultants here, and Sean and Kevin, when they're available, since they've been doing the messaging out in the community. So that could be our next opportunity as a small group meeting. And then we are really keeping the board agenda free from other things, December 9th and 16th, for facility destruction only. I don't think we.
I think those, if we got those set up in the first, I think that's a lot of stuff to do. We can, a lot of the information we asked, we didn't report that. So we watched the pilot, and then we answered your question. The operational policy is that. Yeah, the next steps, yeah, I think we kind of will film. So, yeah, in the next couple of meetings, we really need to get to, you know, how to fool with the financing methods, which are really the buckets that you're running around. The phase, the code is moving forward, so.
I would say that's a piece with the kindergarten, because obviously, Phase One and Phase Two depend on what your plans are with West and the district building. So, I mean, that's critical, and that isn't a decision that you can push out, I don't think, because it's going to affect what you're going to do.
They're tied together.
Yeah. So I think having that discussion and determining what you plan on doing with those two facilities and how you're going to work is a critical piece of bringing in the new talent.
So really, at the end of the meeting on 16th, will we get enough and add a, and a, I don't know, unless we should probably do a draft of the resolutions. If, if we're going to get to that, there's usually, you'll see a first draft, which is, and then that date, and that one, first is, we put.
Sarah, have been working together with Mark and me as well on communication strategies in terms of helps and ideas.
Yeah, so the discussion we have, you know, reading the resolutions really goes really quick once you've decided what the time is going to be.
The resolution has to be about that. I think it's a significant improvement.
On the change you were?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think our meeting is a 16th, right?
Yeah, you don't want to wait till last, if you can't 16th.
We'll get you.
So you have to have a meeting on the ninth, and then, you know, with enough direction, bring a draft of the resolution back. Even maybe fill in the first sale later or something, but at least have that movement, maybe this, that, and this, not that.
Because we have to do it at 16th.
Yeah, I think so. That would be best, that would be best. So we'll get the list to you, we'll bring back the questions, the answers to the questions. A lot of tonight, not today. But then, any else in between, I guess, to the.
I do have, for the board, I'm just going to pass them down. Just take them and pass them. With the exception of period. Yeah, well, I can have them for a meeting, several, and two. It's just some talking points that we kind of put down on paper. I think everybody that's seen them, they're good, they're long, nonetheless.
These are yours, Ken?
They're yours, but you're.
Our communication specialist.
Okay, I just want to make sure that Mr. Moore was.
We could put one in as well.
Yeah, there wasn't enough. Is there another one?
Yeah, we have.
Sean, Sean has one, I'm not sure.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, everyone. Bring this to the portion of the agenda that notes the allocation of the early graduates for 2014, which is the potential to be finally, does not require full reaction. Thus, that brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Continuous School Improvements, which is a discussion of the potential new high school course, courses and the proposal and whatever people need.
Matt and I actually called this a case. Sure. I can get us started. Just wanted to thank our, our teachers who are here with us tonight. Who had a lot to do with proposing courses for the 2014-15 school year. I know all of you have had a chance to look at some of them, but just wanted to emphasize with the implementation of the block schedule this year, there's been a real, real important need for us to look at how we expand our offerings for our students here at the high school. And, you know, keep in mind that. And, you know, keep in mind that our current graduation credits and requirements for the classic 2014 this year is twenty-one and a half credits. In the block schedule, there'll be an increase in graduation requirements each subsequent year, up to the current freshmen, who are going to be expected to graduate with twenty-six credits. So, under the block schedule, students are taking eight, all students are taking eight courses. And, you know, in the past, it was six or seven. So we can see the need to expand the offerings, and our teachers have done a great job of really comprehensively working together as departments, and looking not only at student interest, but also at, you know, what academic needs there are for them to be career and college ready. There's, there's a number of course offerings that, that I think do a great job of collaborating with our business and community partners. There are dual credit offerings, offerings for addressing some of our at-risk needs in the building, and so on and so forth. So I invite you to ask any questions that we might have, or if we're best to answer them, and a number of our teachers are here again to help us with that as well.
I just, one comment and one question, I mean, I was impressed with the overall list, as you, as you mentioned. It does include a lot of community collaboration, I think it's going to be very positive. It meets our strategic point, I mean, twenty-first century skills, all those things are really integrated into it. I brought you and the staff, so it's all kind of work on. The only question I have, and I've listed some questions to Laurie, which he's already answered, is regarding why, was one of the statements in the rationale, why would you have more classes, there would be a reduction in teacher overloads? I would think you would have more if you had more. Why would this be, why was this giving needed really to teacher schedule?
Well, for one thing, it'll spread out some of those courses that might have been, you know, fully, with really full registration to some of the teachers, and all of a sudden, they're not coming up, and they correct during the day, and so all of their blocks are filled. So, you know, the idea is that this will spread out some of those offerings and that can provide more choices for our students. And so therefore, some of those courses will be, some of those teachers will be overloaded during the day, and the future will be overloaded.
Oh, okay, no, I, no, so that there may be teachers who would not have any prep on.
Right.
We're hoping that the, the new courses will provide more balance.
Yeah, okay.
And there is a note on the one, the multi-tier systems will support the academic seminar. We did indicate that potentially, we may need to hire one FTE. However, as Len and Gloria both talked about, we, we are anticipating a decrease in overloads, and those overloads can really add up. So that's where a portion of that, we do plan to do a review of all positions, programs as well, this is where, as part of the project process.
Courses that aren't, you know, fully enrolled in terms of that meeting minimum requirements of about twelve students just wouldn't obviously run. That could include some of the new courses, and certainly could include some of the old courses. I'm happy to address any questions about the academic seminar. It's a real targeted tier-two intervention for incoming freshmen primarily. And it's, it's really targeted at those students that we would use all the assessment data that we have at our fingertips to identify eighth-grade students who may be at risk with some factors for not graduating or failing the courses. And academic seminar comes out of the University of Oregon Incubator for PBIS, and it's been a real successful intervention and throughout the country in various states that are also implementing PBIS framework. Targeted at high school, and targeted specifically at freshmen, sometimes sophomores. Providing those students organizational skills, test-taking skills, career in college, kind of exploration. Provides them targeted support in their academic workload every day, so that in the block schedule, it would be every other day, so that they have that caring relationship with a teacher who's helping to oversee their academic load, and even providing social supports presented as necessary. Highly researched, and again, something that will tie really nicely into what we're trying to do ultimately throughout the district, with providing multi-tier systems to support both academic and social.
Could you get us out of research, have us forward a little?
Sure.
So it's primarily for incoming freshmen in the first semester of the freshman year?
It would, it would be targeted as a year-long course, and they would receive credit for it. You could be provided some flexibility if students are finding that they're, they're really showing signs of success after the first semester, and could be moved into another electra. There could be ways that we look at how there could be a course or a section of sophomores that might benefit an academic seminar as well. So, you know, we can look at some of the local needs that we have, tie this into some of our link through efforts, the student services and the different ways that student services can be engaged in life, that incoming freshmen, and provide them that kind of extra support that they need to be successful. So we can look at it those ways, too.
Are they both selected for this course on entry and also self-select? Or is this just some, is it just something that they are, certain students are targeted?
We would start off by targeting, we'd use one of the new sources from the DPI, the drop-off early learning system, which allows us to really look at all the data that we have in the system and, and see a number of one to one hundred, what risk factor they have for not graduating. And so that's right at our fingertips now, we'll be able to use that.
Very nice tool. Every student has a score.
What if it's taught all year long?
It would actually be a credit for a whole year.
By the semester, it would be an act.
About a half a credit per semester. There could be some ways, as I mentioned, that some of the students might transfer out of it after a semester, if there's any really signs of success in marketing of the electra.
So all of these are listed as half-credits, because they're semester classes.
So it's part of the full credit, it's just a general award?
It's a lot.
General. General.
Do you have an estimate of the numbers that you would feel coming to be?
Probably seventy-five to ninety.
I thought you were going to say something other than ninety percent, sorry. I thought you were making a joke. I have a very strange sense of.
Nobody's turning red.
There's, there's one other course that I want to highlight, and it's in response to some collaboration that has been ongoing with our business partners and the community, and that's our intro to engineering, foundations of engineering. And we've had a number of staff collaborating and meeting with community members and business partners to identify areas that we need to work on, strengthen these partnerships, and provide opportunities for kids. And our business partners have stepped forward to offer materials, to offer financial support for transportation, and a number of areas to support curriculum. So you will see a cost there for that new course proposal. Heart of that can be funded through the Carl Perkins Grant, because it's initial startup equipment. And we do anticipate going to our business partners and asking for support as well.
And I do want to highlight that the cost, you know, last year, we brought fourteen of course proposals for, which the board approved, and the cost last year was forty-three thousand, a little over forty-three thousand. And for these, which we are going to take one of the courses out, we have not talked about yet, because we are going to take out of our course proposals for this year, the controversial literature and history, the department decided to know on the board with that. So we're looking at about fifty-five thousand dollars, which is just a little bit more than last year, to do a lot, a lot more courses. So I feel, you know, with people like that collaborative efforts with some of our manufacturers in town, I do believe that, you know, this is a cost that can be well upped into the existing curriculum budget.
Fourteen courses that we, last year, we was bringing all, all nine?
I believe so.
What, you know, as we, part of it, if we can, can we even get a number of them, if we wrap around overloads, there's always a cost. Can we have any idea what overloads would be, if we didn't do it, I'm not saying.
Well, it's hard to predict, because in a, in a month or so, we're going to do student registration.
Yeah.
And we develop a schedule around the student needs. And so it's hard to know what our, what those staffing needs will be until those students select those courses.
Sure.
But what is a constant is the number of kids. So, you know, we have the same number of kids signing up for courses as we did last year roughly. So there is reason to expect that some of our courses will not run, that may never end with the implementation of these courses.
But with the overloads, again, and again, maybe it's hard to really wrap around what.
Right, but what we.
But it's, it could be a basic thing, you know.
Absolutely, I think what we found this last year is a lot of our elected teachers found their classes very public in many sections, because there, there weren't other places for students to go.
Sure, I'll move it.
I'll second that. Having a motion in the second, just a kind of clarification, one FTE may, may not be where it's at. I would assume that that position, we can come back to us, whether that's needed, whether somebody can be shifted, whether enrollment numbers justify it, so that that's not part of the motion, that it's just a proof, it's a course, it's all, it's the proxy.
I just, on a personal note, I'm very disappointed that the controversy in literature and history is not being offered. I wanted to audit that.
Maybe you could do it in the.
I would do it in a study. With a mirror.
Any further discussions? Well, as far as the position, I, I think you are essentially author, you authorize the course, you're authorized.
Well, not necessarily, we may not need it, depending on how membership, all right, our classes, it may be reassigning one of our current high school staff members. So until we actually sign up, I mean, we, we have plenty of time back to the board with that.
But we would be reassigning a staff member whose duties and obligation all of a sudden evaporated because they are teaching. I mean, it is a, it's clearly a faulty position, correct?
Yeah, right. We did ask staff in some curricular areas to share that may not have to be signed for those areas. I mean, it remains to be seen, we'll have to see.
I, I, I do think that the research and literature suggests that this kind of a wraparound for at-risk students pays for itself exponentially. Number one, purely from an economic point of view, the longer we are able to keep our young people in school, the more the school district receives in per-student revenue. Secondly, we know young people have to evolve, and ninth grade, like sixth grade, is a particularly challenging time for young people, and the more support we can give them, the better. And our responsibilities are to the whole child, not just the academic portion of the child.
But that wasn't part of the motion, just.
Well, it should have been.
I know, I know, you were trying to get me to amend the motion, by the way.
Aye.
Thank you, and there are a number of teachers here that are here to.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for bringing it in there with us. It was a tedious idea to have you to attend to the event.
They're always putting brick and mortar ahead of things, you know.
We do have, next up on our agenda, personnel recommendation, we have approval of reservation.
See before we.
So. The non-owners in favor, say please, I guess, aye.
Aye.
Motion favor, on that, this one, where I mean, the people that hires, does, does this now pose to opposing? Keep us informed. We then have the approval of two long-term substitute positions, and one is in the balance for basic reality education. The other is Pam Sorsy for, you know, special education.
I move, okay, we'll move both of them, long-term position, second.
Discussion. Motion in the second, over the discussion of the third, please, say, I guess, aye.
Aye.
Motion Perry brings us to the approval of some teacher contract adjustments slash increases, first of which is for not free in grade one, for Kathy Robenstein, fifty percent to sixty-two point five. And the rationale for that was provided before previously. And also Greg Manson for the high school business education, education from eighty-three point three-four to one hundred percent. Sorry, I just had to throw that in there.
And they're picking on me.
Those in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. McNeven, next up on your new business, we have the approval of the November twenty-thirteen seat service, first person as chair of finance.
Finance diligently, let's do the list, we reviewed every aspect that we could, and I saw moving.
And the motion by Mr. McNeven, suggested by Mr. Horns, the November twenty-thirteen seat service, first person to vote, please, those, if there is a play, discussion. In favor, say please, aye.
Aye.
Perry brings us to the approval of the district-wide business insurance renewal, I know that also came out of finance, but Martha. Much on that?
Um, sure, um, the board was provided with a history of really happening in the last couple of years, just a slight increase in other insurance. We are happy to, to listen with that, the monster coverage, that other district's that is continuing.
While it doesn't make any motion, two five percent insurance renewal. I also move, we accept the hand motion.
Say.
While the motion was approved, second, I don't know, discussion. Hearing on the move in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Perry brings us back to C, which is the approval of the student furniture for the Jack Young Middle School. And I will again turn to our director of duties, and finance, and judge the fact.
Um, we've just, John and Dave and myself and DUA have gone through a lengthy but fast process to try and get some twenty percent free furniture into the middle school. After we piloted the furniture, John and Dave, teachers, member DUA, and turned bucket water to a final cap. Within the budget that we had, we're able to pitch five of them, which I think is one more of the new rates. So, delivery date will hopefully be over with a break, we have it close, but I'm working with Sam O'Brien, and hopefully.
And we'll make sure that we get some before and after features, too.
And the furniture that's being replaced is, we'll evaluate what it is.
What we're doing is we're taking out any pieces that just aren't even worth saving anymore. And then we're going around all the other classrooms and seeing if there's some that need to be replaced in those classrooms.
I have a feeling the dumpster will be full, yes, the gloves are in good shape. I have a feeling the dumpster will be full, yes, the gloves, and, and the shade.
Any, any, um, if there's another motion, I entertain a motion for the approval of the purchase of that furniture, which we love, already previous to the... So, um, any motion in the second? Second. A motion by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Redwell. Further discussion?
We're going to have everybody hold their breath.
We got this, or we're not moving.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? What should we carry? Brings us to the request for the approval, hopefully, for twenty-fifteen, two thousand fifteen high school trip to Greece. Move to approve. Uh, second, with the caveat, they're the board position.
As long as the board member pays his way. No, no caveat, that's not part of the...
Having a motion in the second and further discussion. What question to you guys, um, we have ten or twelve kids that have specific interests as far as, about that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Like, um, a, a couple parents.
So at what point will you have a go, no-go, based on fundraising?
Well, we are having a parent meeting on Sunday, so we're sort of going from there. It's, we need to be realistic about it, but that's where we make a decision on what we have looking. And, um, we do have some ideas for fundraising.
You're working with the, uh, education, education first?
Education first, yeah. I've, I've been to these, many times, four or five, um, it looks like band testing, and I have some familiarity of the, have you worked with them before? Uh, sorry, district?
Yes. First class.
It might be you all, Peter.
I know.
I know, it sounds like people's working around.
It won't be a god.
It's a great trip, because you look, it looks like a great trip.
Having a motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing on those in favor, which is, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you for sticking with us tonight, let us know how you're doing on the, on the others. Brings us to E. Under New Business Co-Curricular Program Proposals.
As far as the time, I would really accept all of these. I just like to figure out, um, many of, um, our co-curricular faculty have been willing to give some of this programming out, compensation for years, and I feel we feel that this is a plan, we appreciate all of their dedication, and we'd like to ensure that they're compensated. Those very second to the question, the best of those questions?
Oh, I'll second it, please.
Have a motion in the second, any discussion, further, um, appropriate to a program proposal?
I, they all look very impressive, and it's, it's great to be in our, for our students.
No further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? What should we carry? Brings us to the portion of the agenda, where we can cast a floor, the motion to, carry.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.